So, um, so we'll get started. So it's the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, March twenty-third. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve, twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the meeting law and the governor's July sixteen, twenty twenty-two revised order extending remote participation. By all members in any meeting of a public body, this meeting and the planning board will be conducted in person and by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. And or parties with the right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person. And those who wish to do so may attend remotely by following the instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made. To ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL seven, C three, seven, C thirty, A, section twenty F, after notifying the chair of a public. Body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting. Of the public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. And any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up. For discussion to the extent permitted by law. And finally, per section two forty-one dash one of the town code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right. To address a board on any item that requires a vote at a time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as a proponent of an item as permitted to have. Um, so this meeting is being recorded. Um, and we will start with a roll call attendance because some of our members are remote. So we'll start with you, Malcolm.
Here.
Here, Jeremy.
Here.
Jonathan.
Here.
Pedro.
Here.
Jackie.
Here.
Randy here. Okay, so we are moving on then to, um, form A's. I don't believe we have any.
No.
Okay, no form A's. We'll move on to the minutes from our last meeting, March ninth. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
And amended.
Amended and amended. So moved. Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Pedro. Any discussion? Uh, do we need to do roll call events?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so we'll vote. Uh, Malcolm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeremy?
So I'm not gonna vote on this one. You're getting a chance to watch the video here.
Okay, no problem. So you're abstaining?
I'm staying.
Okay, Jonathan?
Alright.
Pedro?
Alright.
Randy, aye. Alright, next we'll move on to our special permit and public hearing and application from Saint James Place Inc., care of white engineering ink to permit the construction and electronic marquee sign. At three fifty-two Main Street, Great Barrington, per section one forty-six nine, designed by law and section ten point four seven zoning by law. Mr. Patano, you were recusing yourself?
I am.
Alright, thank you very much. So we still have four board members present. We've got. Malcolm, Jeremy, Jonathan, and myself. That should be sufficient. Is there any benefit to elevating chat?
Yeah, you may not.
We may not.
You can only elevate if you need more.
Okay.
Really?
Good to know. Thank you very much.
So I'm muted except for comments.
You, of course, can deliberate with us. Um, so I need a vote to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. I've got a motion by Jonathan, second by Jeremy. Do we have any discussion on it? Um, we'll vote. Malcolm?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Randy, aye. Okay, so the public hearing is now open. We'll take a presentation from the applicant. Is that Mr. White there joining us?
Yes.
Hi, Brent, how are you?
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hi, you wanna give us a, um, a presentation on the proposal and then we'll move on to questions from the board?
Yes, and first off, thank you all, uh, for your time this evening. Again, my name is Brent White from White Engineering on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I stated in the introduction here, we are applying for a special permit, um. In this case here, we're actually under the town bylaws under section, uh, one four six dash nine. Under signs and specifically for, uh, marquees, those are requiring a special permit from the, uh, the planning board. Uh, this is a matter that was before the board last month. And offering a recommendation to the select board for, uh, their special permit under the village center overlay district. We appreciate your support during that effort and his report. Uh, we received that special permit earlier this month. Uh, in this case here, the section of the, of the regulations that we're dealing with that is most pertinent is with respect to the, um, the size of the illuminated, uh, marquee itself. This is a sign. That Saint James Place actually purchased from the Clark Art Mu- uh, Museum in Williamstown, um, in a better effort to, uh. Inform the public of all the different entities that they support, uh, through their offices. Um, behind the church building as well as the member of different performances and other cultural events that are, are hosted right on the premises. So that's really the purpose of the, the marquee. Uh, the marquee is to be situated in the front of the property approximately twenty-nine feet behind the sidewalk here. So we're not right at the street line. Um, but still, uh, in a location where pedestrians, um, as well as drivers would be able to, to see the sign and understand, uh, the different events that are available. Uh, with your chair up, with your permission, I'm happy to share my screen just to show, um. This is a.
I think that would be helpful. So yes, please do that.
Okay. So this is the same, same rendering that I showed during the, the hearing, um, last month here, but. On the right-hand side, we can see the, the front of the church here with the, uh, the sign kind of tucked back, um, in the little nook of the, the church here. So we're not. Immediately up on the street here, but it's set back enough where it's still, still visible for those driving by and, and walking by. Um, and on the left-hand side of my screen here, you'll just see some different types of, um, types of events that would be advertised. I can zoom in a little. Closer, but you can see, uh, all the dance company, um. Great Barrington Project, all different types of events here, um, ask the Magnum Music Festival here. And really, the, the goal is to, um. Well, one of the questions I believe the board actually had during the last meeting was what will all the changeover be of the different types of signs that we have? Uh, we anticipate that each, each one of these images that you might see on the left-hand side of the screen here. Uh, that those would be visible for approximately ten or fifteen seconds and then there would be a, a transition to the next image. So there won't be, uh, flashing images or, or distraction for anybody. Um, driving here, but with the goal being of, of trying to, um, if someone were, were stuck at a, a stoplight on, on Main Street here through, uh. Through a traffic cycle here that they'd actually get to see, uh, three or four different types of events that would be advertised during that one, um, period where their paws are obviously walking by, someone could stop and. See, spend as much time as I'd like to see, uh, that's available here, but that, uh, that is the ultimate goal of this, um, this project here. Uh, the next item I'd like to show. Pardon me. Just scroll up here. So here are some of the diagrams from when, uh, the sign was originally purchased here and, uh, the dimensions that I made reference to in the application. This four foot two and a half inches by the eleven foot and one-half inch, that's what represents the forty-six point three seven square feet of illuminated area. Uh, which is less than the fifty square feet, uh, as designated in the, uh, in the regulation. So we, we certainly meet compliance with that requirement here. Um, and with your permission, I'd like just to run through briefly the, uh, the six special permit finding criteria. Uh, for the progress here and then I'd be happy to answer, uh, any questions that you have. So again, I'm, I'm sure. So under section ten point four, we have, um, six specific criteria for which we, uh, a, a permit would need to be, uh, voted on. Um, and the first is to understand the social, economic or community needs which are served by the proposal. Um, and again, Saint James Place, uh, services a number of not-for-profits, uh, through providing. A relatively affordable office space for them to be able to, to operate in town as well as to serve members of. The town of Great Barrington as well as, uh, surrounding southern Berkshire, uh, communities here. Obviously, in terms of economic activity here, this is a, a draw to, to downtown. I think, um, even today, there's still a, a, a fair number of people who, who drive by and, and still think this is the church. So really, this is as much of a public information. Opportunity for, for Saint James Place to really showcase what they do as well as the numerous organizations that they, they help to support. With regards to traffic flow safety, including parking and loading. Um, in this case here, we, we feel we've situated the, the marquee in a way that is, is, uh, not a hazard to, to passengers or, or vehicles driving by. Uh, the site or utilizing the driveway between Saint James Place, uh, and the office building at three four two Main Street. That's also owned by, uh, the applicants under a separate entity. And there's really no additional parking or loading that's driven by the installation of the marquee here. It's more a matter of just trying to. Draw more people to, uh, to the downtown to, uh, enjoy events at Saint James Place and frankly, uh, enjoy the other, other opportunities that are available to, to folks in downtown Great Barrington. Uh, the third is with respect to adequacy of utilities and other public services. Uh, really, there'll be no, no impact to public services here and, uh. It'll be si- simple electricity ran to, uh, the marquee here, but no other, other utilities will be, be required. Uh, the fourth item is with respect to neighborhood character and social structures. And again, we feel this, this sign, it really fits in well aesthetically in the, the front of the church. And really is, is, is been doing so and, and setting the sign and the timing of the different events here. I've really tried to avoid any nuisance that may arise from the fact that it would be an illuminated sign as compared to a solid. Uh, wooden, wood sign that would not have any sort of changeover. Um, this is really allowing us to, to have something that looks. In the proper place in front of the church here, but also serve its true function of, of, of advertisement of, of the different events that are available. Um, impacts on the natural environment. And it's a very. Low footprint with regards to the installation of the sign here. No trees are being removed as a part of the installation, um, for this year and. Really, really think that it sits in well in the, the front landscaping that, uh, the Harrisons have done both on this property as well as, as, uh, three forty-two Main Street currently. And then the last is, uh, number six, which is with respect to potential fiscal impacts, uh, including impact on town services, tax base. Um, and employment here. And really, we, we feel we're, we're addressing all of those and the fact that, um. By having more performances, we're not only supporting Saint James Place, but we're supporting the artists, um, and the organizations that are putting on those events. Uh, many of those events are also things that raise funds to help support, uh, community services within Great Barrington and, and South Berkshire County. Certainly more performances. That's more and more opportunities for artists to display their work, possibly sell their work. Uh, performance artists, uh, whether it's placed to, to rehearse and or, uh, to perform here. We think overall that, that's drawing people. To the center of Great Barrington, supporting the surrounding businesses to, to Great Barrington and, um. Again, really just can't emphasize enough the importance of people truly understanding all the different events that, that are available to enjoy at Saint James Place. And then with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brent. Uh, board members, any questions? Should we start with Malcolm? Do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Jeremy?
Um, was there any conditions that the select board put on their special permits? Brett?
Uh, no, no, there's no, no special conditions placed.
Um, the other question I had is, um. Would you be, or would the applicant be willing to have it a condition of the special permit to, for the ten-second minimum? Um, before the images change?
Uh, for a ten-second minimum, did I hear you correctly?
Yeah.
Jeremy, Jeremy, you're off base there. You, no, the thirty. You can only do two images per minute. Thirty seconds is the, is the minimum time. Of an image.
I thought he, I thought he had said twelve seconds or fifteen.
And I'm correcting him because he's wrong.
Okay.
According to the, the town code.
Okay.
The definition of electronic signs says not less than thirty seconds.
So that addresses Jeremy's concern.
That addresses my, more than, more than addresses my concern.
Excellent.
Alright, great. Did you have any other?
But more not for the applicant, but I had more of a comment, but should I?
If it's pertaining to this matter?
Yes, but it's more for the board than the.
So should it be something we bring up in deliberation? It's not a question? Okay. Jonathan, did you have a question?
No.
No question? Jackie?
My only concern is design. Because I'm looking at the samples that you submitted and they're. Very wordy. I mean, unfortunately, your name is like, I used to work for the kitchen center for video dance music and something, something, something. And I understand what you mean, describing everything you do. And that's hard. Um, but the. So I'm looking at what you've placed there and if, if you're in a car, you're not gonna get it. If you're a walker, you're gonna get it. I'm just. And I'm just thinking about how you're really working with the design and the look and feel. So it's, it's that because I know the Clark well and I know they don't use a lot of text and they're very simple and it's very easy and clean to read. And so you get the message. Um, and I'm just wondering how you're working. The design. And because I love the notion of an electronic. Marquee and the fact that you, it's much more efficient and effective if the design, the images and the graphics. Are good. So that's just one thing and what was curious as to going to, how are you going to do it?
Can I speak to that?
And then I have a follow-up. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, I have to say, General Manager of Saint James Place. Um, the basic idea is to, uh, obviously to promote an event. And it would be very simple text of the event, date, time, and the call to action to drive people to the website, period. Uh, and then the rest of it would be mostly graphic. These are samples that were put up by our designer that we'll be working closely with to. Enable that to happen, but it's, um, for instance, Oga Dunn Dance Company. It would say, Oga Dunn Dance Company, date, time.
Okay.
And Saint James Place dot net.
And a lovely image.
Yeah.
If you can.
Yeah. But this. Then that's our goal.
Uh, because I have just another follow-up questions, just because when I was looking at, um. The, what you're going to be doing or what the sign might be doing is serving as, you have direct advertisement for all uses, events and services available. So I understand its use when you're advertising an event in the evening or whenever or a series of things, but services. Now that kind of flips it into. Straight advertising as opposed to come and see what we're presenting. This is, I was just wondering whether you're actually creating a freestanding. Image that rotates in and out and it tells you that we also have rentals and you could have, I'm just wondering. How that, if that's.
It's not our intention to advertise.
Sorry, sorry, Sally. Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Sally Harrison, President of Saint James Place. It's not our intention to advertise Saint James Place other than to say it's a cultural center so that they know that. But, um. It, the, the website is really the key and the image. When I look at it, that's what I think. Because you see, oh, this is, there's gonna be music here. That, there's, somebody's good for themselves, you know?
I know, I totally understand.
That's the idea.
It's just one thing where there's a point on, this is from the, um, special permit application that came to us before this sheet. But it does have language in here. Saint James Place has already established as a mixed use. And the marquee will serve as direct advertisement for all uses, events and services available. So is that services available? I thought it was going to get a little more. Salesmanship, not just.
Yeah, no.
The artists who are performing there.
No, not, we're also, yeah, no, nothing like, that was our kind of, we really, it's mostly upcoming, you know? Things that are currently going to be playing. And something that will be coming in the next few years. It's, it's just, we want to generate, um. In the minds of the community. Who can see what's going on, much in the way you brought by the Maheway, who can see what's going on, you know?
No, I, I, I totally get it. I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be perfect and work really well.
Our samples didn't have that many words on them, so I didn't really. I agree, words are, otherwise somebody's driving, like, trying to match it and I wanted to.
That's what I wanted.
We're looking for also to create an ongoing homepage that would be basically, didn't have it designed yet, but fully, but our logo and the website. That's simple. And that's kind of our landing page homepage.
The image is gonna carry the weight of the.
Yeah.
Of what you're doing.
For, for this, for the sign.
Home page, I mean. On going.
On the sign.
I don't know, but, yeah.
Anything else, Jackie?
Well, I'm getting, I just have a. Question that's not on point, but it is about electronic signs.
Um, why don't you ask it? I don't know if you're ready to.
I'm just, I'm wondering about, is this a precedent center for other people coming to the select board or the planning board to use electronic signs? Because this is going to be, or is this a one-off?
It has, it has to be a performance venue or the fire station, police station.
Okay, that's because I remembered the discussion around the fire station. So those are two that are kind of called out and that's okay.
Yeah. As Jonathan alluded to, the definition for marquee sign, or the regulation says it's. Only on the premises of theaters, cinemas or business, we judge their history.
Wait, that's different. Businesses in the.
Marquee sign, you know, so this is in terms of marquee signs and sorry, electronic signs.
Yeah.
Those are your questions.
While you're looking that up, I will ask Brent a question. So, um, Brett, in terms of the location of the sign, so. It's only the illuminated face that's parallel with Main Street, right?
That's right.
Okay, and, um, it seems to be sort of set back behind the front entryway. Is there some rationale there that you wouldn't want it like? Even with the front entryway so that the architectural. Stone feature that duts out near the stair doesn't screen it from traffic that's coming northbound on Main Street?
I think the.
Into that site selection.
I. Our, our preference was, first off, we do, we know we have some trees that are, that are along the street that are obviously going to, to remain in place and, uh, from our standpoint here, we. The way we, we situated on the property, we thought it would be the most advantageous, really understanding that vehicles traveling southbound will, will see. That portion of the sign more primarily than those coming northbound. It'll likely be those that are northbound that are stopped, that would likely even have the vantage point to. Uh, to, to look over and see that there. And I think in terms of where the utilities are, not taking away from the front, the prominence of the church here, we didn't want to have that. Competing, I, I don't, we, we don't have any setback issue that would prohibit us from having it be parallel to, to the front of the church and. Uh, for sale, those who were there, um, present there, if they have any specific thoughts on that there. Um, we're, I think, I'm unable to hear that, but I think the thought was that it would not be competing with the actual front of the, of the church and then setback kind of almost. Giving it more, more of a focal point in that location than trying to compete with the front of the building.
You're sort of downplaying the location a little bit, is that?
That, that was, that was our thought process on that, but if, if, or.
Okay, thank you.
Like that about the application?
Um.
I mean, I know you was looking at it from the point of view, it's better for them if it's a help more, but.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's just my personal feeling. So, um, question about the sign by law, did I read it correctly that the illumination has to be off between eleven and six? We don't do a lot of signs, so bear with me while.
I was pulling up once, uh, one forty-six as we were speaking earlier here, so I was trying to.
Yeah, so I, I think it says, um. That illuminated signs, um. Let's see where.
I don't think we require that anywhere else.
Illuminated signs adjacent residential district should be turned off. So, well, no, well. We did. Yeah, so I mean, would the sign run all the time?
The marquee does, the Maheway doesn't turn it off at night.
That's true, they don't, but we have made other entirely eliminated signs.
I think, I can just speak to that.
Yeah.
Particular issue, I think our thought was that. We have maybe a, a sign that just said Saint James Place, a cultural center. And maybe even lower the illumination, but not have it going all night long.
That's kind of what I was wondering, right?
Yeah, but for us, it is our only sign.
Yeah.
It's an opportunity to say, this is what it is.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But if that, in that case, it's just basically saying this is what the building is.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be, I think there was one example that he gave that just had our logo, you know, and that would be.
Okay, so it'll go to like a non-changing sign.
That would be that.
Okay, yes.
So, so this sign is several things.
Yeah.
It's an electronic sign.
Yeah.
As John talked about, the movable copy, only two per minute essentially. Um, it's an illuminated sign.
Mm-hmm.
Which you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Neither of those, in and of themselves, require a special permit.
Mm-hmm.
It's the marquee for a performance venue.
Yeah.
Requires a special permit. So. You're concerned about precedent setting. First of all, every special permit for a marquee is taken on its own set of facts and basis. And could be made, a decision is made, you know? Where that marquee is located, you know, it's all those sorts of factors. So I don't think you necessarily have to worry about.
So a marquee, and a marquee is defined as?
It's for performance venues, cinemas, theaters.
Okay.
Yep. I hope that answers all those questions in one fell.
Okay, um.
This is also a freestanding sign.
It is a lot of things, all things to all people. Um, okay, so if the board members don't have any further questions, we will take comments and questions from the public. So, um, for folks that are attending virtually, if you wish to comment, um, or have a question on this matter, please raise your hand and Chris will. Um, unmute you and I don't know if you guys had any comments for the audience. You're here on behalf of the application, so. We'll give them one more. Does anybody, uh, I see about six people, um, online, five people, because Chris, I would say. Uh, any comments or question? Okay, hearing no comments or questions from the public, we will move on to, um, comments from other boards or commissions. So. What do we have, Chris?
So we're granted a special permit.
Right, so that should be, can we assume that's an endorsement? You don't have to clear anything with DPW or.
Historical, historical, so far, yeah.
The, um. The select board will descend their positive recommendation, planning board on this marquee sign.
Okay.
The, uh, health department reviewed this and found it to be not jurisdictional to the. For help.
Okay.
Uh, and same thing for the conservation commission, they reviewed it and found there to be no areas of wetlands or scenic mountains jurisdictions.
Good to know.
Rivers, right?
That is it. Thank you very much. Okay, um. So let's see, um, so then we'd be looking for a, um, motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, we'll vote on that. Malcolm, your vote?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Randy, aye. Okay, so now we will, um, celebrate on the matter. Jeremy, did you have a further?
Yeah, I just wondered. I mean, it wasn't having, like, I didn't. Have any concerns with this application, but it's more just with electronic signs in general, um. We didn't say anything about, so you know, like, when you put certain colors together, it's like they're in motion. And so I know, like, if you were trying to con- uh, construct a some electronic sign. That to draw attention to it without moving, um, you could by your use of color. I mean, I'm not, it's, it's, I have no concern with the.
Wow, I have no idea.
But I'm wondering if maybe.
If you're gonna stick to this first?
Yeah, but I'm wondering if we could talk about, I mean, just because this is the first one of these that we're seeing, if we could. Maybe talk about that.
Interlinked with the last.
I'm sure the fire department's coming.
Presenting station.
Um. That, that's an interesting point, um. I guess the only, like, comment I have on that, you're worried about, are you worried about it from like a, a health point? Like it's.
Yeah, so it was.
Distracting to someone, so sensitivity to light?
Well, it's health and safety, I, like, traffic too, like, if something's in motion, it draws your attention away from the road and that sort of thing. But, and then also character, because we don't really, I, I don't know.
Character in this board is like a giant question mark, right?
So, but.
And people, and people refuse themselves to.
Well, I thought that was, we can talk about it. In terms of, um, your concern, I mean, I think there are starting to be some concerns about, um.
What?
Like, um.
It's on every single.
Disability community.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, how.
Like, whenever you're watching a.
But in this case, doesn't the sighting, like, being even more recessed, I think it's, it's very subtly cited.
No, and I think, like, they've done so many things to, like. Like, really mitigate a lot of things, but they didn't have to, because.
But that's the beauty of a special permit, right? We can bring. We can evaluate each application on its merits and on the particulars. Yeah. Okay, alright, anything else?
Um.
Malcolm, anything else for you?
Um. Just, just to confirm, this is not part of the historic district, right, Chris?
I think we discussed that at the last time and that is correct. It is not part of the, there's a historic. Jonathan, anything else? Jackie, anything else?
No, I look forward, well. I was about to say.
For to vote?
No.
Record to see.
No, I'm actually looking forward to seeing what you're showing there. You know, what you're presenting, and I think this is. Be a way that I can learn.
I think a perfect thing is if you did some performance of the two thousand and one, um, space, obviously soundtrack.
Okay, now we're well. Yeah, we have to make findings, right? Or do we have a comment from the public?
Uh, Malcolm, when you asked about the historic district, were you talking about buildings under the jurisdiction of the historic district commission?
Yeah, because we're going through the, uh, other comments, uh, I don't think it's required, right?
This is not under the jurisdiction of the historic district commission.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Chris. So I think we need to make findings on the, um, on ten point, uh, ten point four, right? Yes. We've been, we've been given.
Some ideas.
Some suggested findings.
Those six.
Right, um, so in terms of social, economic and community needs which are served by the proposal. Um, the applicant suggested this will provide greater awareness of the various, um, events that are provided. Um, the applicant suggested this will provide greater awareness of the various, um, events that are provided at the location and. Um. Uh, inform both residents and visitors of what's going on there, so, um, that I think will be helpful. Um, item number two, traffic laws.
I. Yes, well, I mean, I think all of that helps to preserve or, and keep preserving a historic building, it has such a.
That's a good point, it is, it is, there's been an adaptive reuse, yeah, sure, and it can keep that building in use.
You know, the more successful they are, then the more successful.
And how old is it, is it two fifty-two?
It was built in eighteen fifty-seven.
Okay.
And the, the building next to it was nineteen ten.
Okay, yeah.
And it probably looks as. It is an empty lot.
There's also, there's also a benefit that they're repurposing it, so.
That's a good point, yeah, sure.
I don't know what it costs to get rid of those, but it's probably substantial because of the electronics.
Point, okay, item number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and lo- uh, loading. Um, we talked about the setback for the sign being sort of subtly cited, and other than that, I don't think there are any parking or loading concerns related to the sign.
I think his point was well taken that, you know, or their point was well taken about seeing it going south, and then when there's stop at the light going north. Then that would be their opportunity, I mean, I think that's.
Sure. Um, adequacy of utilities and other public services, I think that's probably not applicable. Um, neighborhood character and social structure, um, it is a business district, it is a, um, public venue, so having that marquee sign. Um, I think it will be helpful in establishing and communicating the use, so I think that is consistent with number four. Impacts on the natural environment, I don't think that's applicable either. Um, and number six, potential fiscal impacts, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. Um. And I think the comment about providing and supporting the viability of Saint James Places is appropriate, um, drawing more tourists to the community.
Not just that, but all the nonprofits that perform there.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Equals hundred, which is a whole nother.
Yeah, definitely, um, so in terms of, um, those six findings, uh, we'd be, uh, be looking for a motion to, yes, yeah.
Um, okay, this is just hairsplitting, but I'm thinking about the content on the sign.
Yeah, if you need more, sorry.
Yeah, that's true.
Clarification question.
This is a clarification question, if, um, you're, I was thinking of the buskers, buskers. And let's say Saint James is partnering with the buskers. Um, if the busking isn't happening or the walking by, are you allowed to? Have on your sign a partnership with somebody who's doing something not in your space, but down the road? I'm just going there, we're, because of the visibility of.
That's not really our intention.
I'm just curious, because I'm playing with the community.
They're struggling so much, I mean, so many organizations want so badly to put something out in front, so what they've been doing is putting these. Rather pathetic banners on the, that hang sideways on the entrance. So it's really for the people who would be in the space, not to advertise something other than the town, you know, I think that would be. I mean, the buskers actually were on our, we had a couple of buskers on the property.
Yeah.
And so, but it, there's, there's. An extraordinary amount of activity.
So you're drowning in need for yourself.
Yeah, for, for, and for these organizations, who really don't have public relations budgets, don't have publicity budgets, just doing what they can, you know. And the internet is your main way of getting the word out, but there's so many opportunities. For people driving by, oh, I had no idea that was going on, oh, that would be wonderful, I'd love to go do that, you know. That's what we're missing, is the, the opportunistic, um. You're.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so we've, um, we've reviewed the application, and been through the steps of the, um, public hearing, and we have deliberated and made findings, so I'm looking for, um, a motion to approve the special permit.
I would like to make the motion, uh, with one condition, which is just that they adhere to the thirty seconds.
They must, that is not a condition.
Yeah.
They must.
Okay, just a reminder.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Sir.
Thank you, Jeremy, we motion a second, do we have further discussion? The none, uh, will vote Malcolm?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
When are you installing?
Thank you, Jonathan, that's a fall, they're kicking us around and doing something.
Maybe friends can give all of this.
When does it go live?
We got, we got, yeah, we're, we didn't want to jinx anything, so we haven't.
You got a summer season coming up.
We wanted people up.
Right.
Why did the clerk want to sell it?
The clerk didn't sell it, they gave it away.
They did?
And they gave it away to an art center outside of Boston. And. They didn't use it, they never used it, and then they said, you can have it if you want it.
Wow.
Well, then, yeah, it's a very big sign, we had to go, it, we had, it, it's really a, a book, the whole story of how we got this sign.
Well, it's a, it's a.
Somebody moved it, someone from Great Barrington worked on getting it, the Hopkins and Art scene. And they knew about it, so that kind of like how. But it really, it's a, it's a very elegant sign, and the use of the scale of the building, I think it fits nicely.
Great, good luck.
I'm glad it designed one.
Yeah, absolutely, all right, well, congratulations, I look forward to seeing it.
Good luck. Nice to see you.
All right, so Pedro's gonna rejoin. Thank you, Brad, have a good night. Um, good luck at your marathon, when is that, that's like in April sometime?
Thank you very much, uh, three weeks from Monday, so, uh.
Yeah, oh yeah, Patriots Day, he's doing the Boston Marathon.
Boston.
And you're, and you're not?
Good luck, Brad.
What the hell kind of Patriot are you?
Thank you all.
Bye. Come run laps up, up around your house, you cannot join me, we'll do our own marathon.
Ooh, I'd like to see that. Have you done Boston?
I haven't done Boston.
That's the one.
All right, um, so, next item on our agenda are the zoning bylaw amendments, so we had left, um. One item on the table, so to speak, um, which was with regard to Route seven trees, and how we want to proceed with Route seven trees. Um, let's see, so we had some very compelling discussion from the tree committee. Regarding a desire for us to maintain the current bylaw. Which requires one tree every twenty-five feet. Um. Think I was the only one in favor of a payment in lieu of trees, and, uh. I don't know really honestly where everyone else. Oh, you're on my side. All right, so, so I mean, I guess that the question is, do we want to just leave it as is? Do we?
Well, Chris, Chris suggested some language.
I did, I put some language in there.
That allows, I said, your public hearing to modify it.
Chris, you want to tell us what you, you checked with town council, right?
The review to the matter with town council, we suggest the following, uh, to be inserted at the end of section six point two point seven. For, so you keep the twenty, the twenty-five feet as is, but the planning board as part of the site plan review, approval for a project may waive or modify the requirements of the subsection of the client's respective areas to this requirement. Would be impractical given particular characteristics of the state, so it's just a part of your site plan process. Um, we felt that that was, you had the authority to do that, and avoided the complications of donations and woo and. Which can often be seen as quid pro quo's or not necessarily justified, um. Uh, exactions. So this is probably the, the. Uh, best and clearest way to achieve.
Yeah.
Your judgment.
And I don't think it's controversial.
Malcolm, do you have any thoughts on it?
You did. Malcolm, you're muted.
I know, we're sorry, because that looks like whatever you're saying.
Sorry, I've been giving him mute, so you don't have to suffer through my call, but, uh, what happens to the, uh, special permit requirement there, I was just trying to look that up real quickly, but, uh, are we then replacing that?
No, that, everything would remain as is, this would be an addition of just the underlying tax.
Okay. So.
And six point two point eight remains, and can govern anything in six point two. This is just a, just, just a, you know, provision for the, for the trees in six point two point seven.
Okay, s- okay. Okay, so this was, uh, the rest of six point two, okay, great, good, thank you.
So you're, are you generally okay with the proposed?
I, I am very much okay with this, I like the language of it, I, you know, I, I expressed my, my feelings, I think, before that, uh, I think this is what we should do, so, yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Malcolm, Jeremy? You're, you're in agreement with this suggestion language? Jonathan?
Yeah, it's good.
No edits?
No.
No?
I mean, I, I also had a question about the special permit, because it seems like. If, then when, would there ever be?
When would it be triggered?
Yeah. Would there ever be a situation where we wouldn't see site plan review for any project?
We've already, we've already issued a special permit for the Rye Cliff Motel sign. What's?
But what's your point about that?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not following you.
Well, so we do issue special permits for signs occasionally.
Oh, and we're talking about the trees.
The trees.
Oh.
Where, when would a special permit for a tree be required?
Or when would we not see any project that would be on Route seven? For site plan? This provision is specific to require trees along the frontage in certain areas of Route seven. That's all this is, it doesn't have to do with anything else in section six point two, which has other Route seven escaping requirements.
For the others, so if you wanted to deviate from other provisions.
Buff planted buffer and guys, things like that. This is just.
Okay, Jack, okay, okay, Chris, thank you for, um, for looking at that with town council, I appreciate it. Um, so in general, are we, we're good with this proposed language? Um, and so we would take this language to, to, um, town meeting, and council felt that that addition was, were, were good as far as procedurally.
Yes, so you just want to make a vote.
To, okay.
Yeah.
So let's see, what's the right language, it's, um, a recommendation to.
Send a positive recommendation to the town meetings.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Jonathan, Jeremy? Any further discussion?
Just a question, this is, this will be proposed on the floor. Correct?
No, this will be written in the one.
It'll be in the one. It's for a final night to get your language correct. So this is fine.
We saw this in the public hearing?
We saw.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yep.
We, this is the modification that's came out of.
This is what, this is the result of the, this is response to the public hearing.
That's. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, great, so we have a motion from Jonathan, a second from Jeremy, and further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote Malcolm?
Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Great, thank you, guys.
So, Brandon, you want to take it up now, there is a gentleman who had a question about the, the vote that the planning board took on the Silver Street.
Okay.
Proposal. Um. And, uh, some confusion about that, which I sent you, uh, right out of our own.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
Unfortunately, I, I had said that, uh. All five members voted in favor, forgetting that Jeremy wasn't here, so it was a four to zero vote. Um, but I think I confused things on that, because we didn't do roll call votes last time, because everybody was, who was participating was present, we didn't do the roll call votes. People didn't hear the yes, 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 and so there was some confusion there.
Correct.
So, for the record.
I.
It was a four to zero.
Yeah, I did go back and review the minutes on the matter, and, um, yeah, Jeremy was not present, and everyone else voted for it, so. Um, so we did in fact vote, um, to refer that item to town meeting. Um. So is, is Mr. West the individual who had the question?
No, it was actually, it was actually Mr. Under, you want to take this? And?
Um, if it pertains to this matter, sure. Mr. West, if you unmute yourself, you should give the comment.
Hi, thank you.
Hi.
Um, we, uh, we live, uh, directly across the street from thirty-five, uh, Silver. And I'm just curious as to the rationale for changing the zone, which is, uh, the same zone that we are in. And what is the rationale for changing that? Uh, I'm told, uh, by the current owner of the property that the sale is contingent on a zoning change. Um, but as I found out from talking to people in Town Hall, no one seems to know who the owner is, or the owner has not made a formal request. Uh, to this board or any other office, so it doesn't, I'm trying to understand why you're making the change.
Sure.
When the so-called potential buyer is looking for this change, but they haven't formally asked for the change, I guess is what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, so that, that's honestly, Mr. West, that's news to us, we, um. We, as a board, are always looking at different opportunities. Um, for, um, zoning amendments that, um, increase opportunities for housing in the community, and. I'm not aware that any requests have been made to any, um, member of this board or to any, um, staff.
So you, are you saying that you're making this change so that you can add more housing? Uh, allow a developer to develop more housing without any, uh, input from a butters to that property?
Well, so the input is, you know, as we had our public hearing last week on this matter, um, so there's definitely that input, there's also town meeting input. Um, and when a particular development proposal may come forward, um, there's also input at that level, so there's, there's tons of opportunities for input.
Okay.
But.
So I would like to make, make the statement that we're, uh, we're against this, uh, change in zone. Uh, which is currently the same zone that we are in across the street, which is single-family housing. Uh, and by changing the, as I understand it, by changing the zone, you're going from a potential of nine units to fifteen units. So you're almost doubling, uh, the potential of units that can be built across the street. Um, so I just find it kind of odd that you went ahead and did this without consulting, uh, people that it would affect, uh. Across the street, that's all.
Okay, so thank you very much, I appreciate the comment.
Can we get, uh, his address?
Um, I think he said he's thirty-five Silver?
Right.
I'm across the street at thirty-six.
Oh, you're at thirty-six, okay. All right, thank you very much, um. And so we're on roll, so we might as well have Mr. Under speak as well, so he's got similar feedback. Thank you. Mr. Under, if you unmute yourself, you should be able to, uh, provide your comment.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that Mr. Fick, Mr. Hankin, and Mr. Pachano did vote for doing this?
Yes, sir, we reviewed the minutes, and, um, all parties who were present in the room voted in favor. Um, Mr. Ega was out that meeting, so that would have been the, the four remaining members, myself, um, Mr. Pachano, Mr. Hankin, and Mr. Beck.
But they still haven't concurred that they did vote for it.
It, it wasn't a roll call.
So I'm just telling you.
I know it wasn't, I watched the vote.
That is.
So do you, are you agreeing to it?
We, Mr. Under, we did not have to do roll call vote, because all of our members were in the room, so I said all in favor, and it was all ayes and no opposed.
There was no ayes, but okay. Yeah, you watched the video again, I urge you all to watch it. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so, um, the next item, I believe, is just discussion of how we want to organize these for town meetings. Oh, so Jonathan had some small edits as well? Okay, thank you, Jonathan, where are we starting?
Uh, six point four point five. Point three.
Six point four point five point three pedestrian access?
Yeah, there's, there's no mention there of handicap or ADA accessible. Which I think is a mistake, I think.
Accessibility is generally presumed to be ADA accessibility?
Well, this doesn't smack that.
I mean, it's called an accessible route.
Hmm?
Says to ensure accessibility.
Yeah.
That, that is like colloquially, that is the word we use for site planning.
So you think that, that covers it?
I do. I really do.
All right. Uh, coming down to six point four point six point one.
Six point four point six point one, okay. All lights shall have full horizontal.
A ninety degree or horizontal plane from the base of the fixture. Which is a little weird, uh, because, well, we have a Walmart light, for instance. Or a view. You know, typically it's from the shade.
IES does have some language on that, that's a little bit different, um, that's the illuminating engineer's idea.
Yeah, if you could.
Um, let, let me look, can I look that up and?
Yeah.
On the ground?
And. No.
It is, I think it is something like that.
So the. A ninety degree, so if the fixture is here, it's taking ninety degrees from here. And nothing should shine above.
Well, that's, that's crazy, because that doesn't work. I think what it meant is here's the fixture, and it's going from the base of it instead of the top.
So it should be a ninety from the top.
From whatever the cutoff is.
Top of the.
It shouldn't go above the cut.
Light source?
It's, um. And I need to be a horizontal plane.
But isn't it?
Isn't it?
No, there, there is some technical language, I just am not finding it right now. What were you gonna say, Jeremy?
But isn't it really what you're wanting is not it to not shine? Greater than. Ninety degrees from level? Right?
Yes, that is the intent, it is like keeping with the ground.
Some weird angle that it's mounted at. I mean.
I, I think we could strike the ninety degrees. And just say horizontal plane.
From the light source?
Horizontal plane.
Yeah, maybe who likes. Yeah. That works.
Better. It's pretty nice.
Speaking of which.
And then. And then.
Wait, wait, please, until I get that.
Is what we're doing, or?
I'm just, I, um, there's like, it's rattling around in my head and I just can't grab it, um, out of there at the moment, so I'm like that, right?
Waiting for Malcolm. That's a genius thought about this.
I think, I think we could just do period at horizontal plane. I don't think we need from the base of the fixture.
Horizontal plane.
And we could strike the ninety degrees, just. Ninety degrees from one. That's.
Shine above our horizontal plane. Well, you need some. Yeah, exactly. Shine.
So this is our last chance to correct the language, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, before the, before it goes to the one.
So, uh, if we adopt something now, though, we could, uh, and Brandy find something better, we could always offer it at the floor.
Yeah, yeah. It can get a little confusing, so we can resolve it.
Yeah, I know, it's not ideal, but, uh.
Oh, here, okay, this is what's in the, um, model lighting ordinance. So it says, um. Um, so that light is not projected below the horizontal plane through the luminaire's lowest light emitting part. So that's.
Below?
Yeah.
Above.
Is projected, so the luminaire is constructed and installed in a manner. Um, in such a manner that all light emitted. Either directly or diffusely or indirectly by reflection or refraction is projected below the horizontal plane. So that means the light only goes down.
Yeah, 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 we're all in agreement.
Right.
Reflection or refraction, wow, we should put all that in there.
Just trying to grab the pertinent of this one.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Um.
And it's horizontal.
So this is all light shot, full horizontal shielding.
Have to like, project it onto black.
I think you could just say from the light source is fine.
Yeah, I think horizontal plane from the light source would work.
Yeah, from the, that's the thing, from the. Light.
Got it, Chris?
So, light source?
Does not allow any light dispersion or direct glare to shine above a horizontal plane from the light source.
Yeah, that's good.
I guess the way that IES has got it is flipped around, that it shines only. Below the horizontal plane established by that.
Supposedly saying that it, yeah, it writes not.
You like that better?
Yeah, it's, I mean, the positive is always better, only.
So the thing.
So.
Right, so all lighting shall have full horizontal shielding such that the housing only allows. Allows, you could strike any light dispersion or direct glare to shine below. The horizontal plane from the light source.
Do you want to? Take out the housing part, though, like the second housing part? Because you just want the light to not, right, to only shine down?
I think what we had.
No, the housing allows the light to only shine below the horizontal plane. Yeah, I think that's right. I think that's practical and makes sense.
All light shall have full horizontal shielding such that the housing only allows light dispersion or direct glare to shine below.
The horizontal.
The horizontal plane.
Only allows, okay.
I want to take out word glare. Only allows light to shine.
Okay.
Below.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Only allows light to shine below the horizontal plane from the light.
That seems simple, right, and clear?
As long as that, so that's still forced you to put the light emitting to be recessed in the housing? Because when the, when the. You know, because when the housing's doing the work, if you put the light source below the housing, then the housing is forcing the light to go down. But the light is admitted, and, yeah, that's, well, that's a good one.
Yeah.
And you're saying from the light source here?
Yeah.
Right, which should be.
So that's why I was thinking maybe just the housing is constructed ways and that the light source is only.
Well, I, I think the way this is worded, go ahead, Chris.
I mean, what you always say in site plan is that all light shall be directed down. Say all lights shall have a full horizontal shielding.
Yeah.
Such that.
Yeah.
Light shines only down.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
But even though we say that in site plan.
Okay, yeah, that's. To show, so housing only allows light to shine downward.
Should we add an exception here for Town Hall?
No.
No, next, next year we make this a general bylaw, then we can go after Town Hall.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, number four. Just in that same section, the bottom of the light source on a whole light shall be no higher than twenty feet above finished grade.
Mm-hmm.
Which is what we do for commercials, but. Uh, we've tried to keep it below fifteen, so. Indifferent, in the. High impact commercial. We've allowed twenty-five, but we generally try to keep it. Below fifteen.
Although the co-op, I mean, we were talking about examples last time, right? The co-op is twenty also, right?
Well, should we say fifteen unless otherwise?
Um. Shall be fifteen feet, but no higher than twenty? I mean, I don't know if that's really.
No, I would say, uh, shall be fifteen unless noted differently somewhere else in code.
What did, did we say something in neighborhood?
Because again, the commercial lighting thing is, is, avoids the number of lights.
Even.
Yeah, potentially, you know, potentially in a quick lot or in a larger. So just adding, just making it fifteen and then just adding a, a note to that number that says unless otherwise. Noted in the bylaws somewhere else, like in the control district. Or in high impact development question.
Yeah, I don't.
Should we know higher than fifteen feet above finished grade? Yeah.
That's better.
So, nursing, so sorry, um, at the nursing. There was a, there's a, something in that nursing home conversion code that I think says.
I think it said fourteen.
So this would be one of those instances.
Yeah.
If there's other places in the bylaw, then you can.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, Jonathan, anything else?
Yeah. Eight point one. From two. You might want to strike all two family.
Eight point one point two requirements, all two unit and three unit residential uses.
Eight point.
You just found a family that.
Point three.
All two and three unit residential.
Let's start family, yeah.
Yes.
Uh. And, and number one there. Under that section. I think we should say be located on the rear or side of the building. Saying it could only be located on the rear is a little restrictive.
First skips an outside stories leading to a second or higher story where practicable shall not be located on any building wall facing a street. Be located on the rear or side of the building?
Yeah.
And comply with section.
But you don't think the practicable allows you to do the size when the rear is not?
You may, you may need two staircases. Off of the second floor of a garage.
Yeah, we have, we have seen cases where there's.
Yeah.
You got the two staircases and then.
Are we all okay with that? Be located on the rear, side, or rear?
Yeah, as, as long as it's not facing a street, which is part of the.
Right.
Yeah.
This one we have, like, from switching by parent.
No. Um, okay, what else, Jonathan?
Eight point two point now two. Under requirements, there's a new. So, number eight. Farm buildings are solely for the use of the farm's full-time employees.
Yeah.
Uh, that's tricky because a lot of farm workers are seasonal. So does that mean they can't be provided housing in, in ABU because?
You, you'd prefer to say farms, employees, and strike full-time? What do you prefer to do?
Yeah.
I guess.
Position to give. Cheap housing to anyone who's not working for them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, no, I, I think that's reasonable. Anybody else have any concern with that? No? Okay.
Full time?
Yeah.
Just try full time.
And then the next one is the one below that. Uh, why do we have, why are we adding this? The Board of Health or its agents should give its approval prior to the issuance of a building permit?
And we're concerned about sanitation.
It was up above in old eight point two point two.
Yeah.
And I guess the board wanted to carry it. Forward, even though they.
This member of the board would like to carry it for, just in terms of making sure there's adequate sanitation.
Well, they've got to do that for any residents. Why, why do we have to? Add it here?
And the reminder, I guess. Anyway, they, when they go to the buildings department, that's the first thing they're gonna check. If their stuff gets supportive.
Yeah, so. I don't know, it just seemed redundant. The next one is eight point three point three. Point now one.
Permanent all open space?
Yeah. Uh, permeable open space of fifty percent of the total area of the property, and we're excluding driveways and walkways and parking spaces. Uh, and we have, we have five thousand square foot lots. Yeah, we're gonna have this discussion. I mean, that's, you know, in a big lot, it's, it's not an issue, but in a small lot, that's a problem. Five thousand square foot lot, you should not, twenty-five hundred square.
So we're talking about multi-unit dwelling. Right?
So can, can we start off by asking what the purpose of that? Fifty percent is?
Well, if I recall. I'm probably the one who is. Asking that we keep this in because. Even if it's small, adding more impervious and not. Creating space to allow that rainwater from that impervious to be absorbed. Into the ground, I think can create a lot of downstream problems for neighbors. And even problems on a particular site.
Because driveways, walkways, and parking spaces. Driveways.
We don't need to do that, right?
Driveways, parking spaces, and walkways could all be made permeable.
But nobody does.
But we've talked about that, you have to maintain it, right?
Be maintained as permeable, yeah.
And that's the problem, like, it starts off and then it's, it becomes impermeable later, which is.
Full in their violation.
Yeah, but nobody's gonna.
So then. What's on on this? I think this comes up every year.
It does, and I'm just gonna say, like, I've got several neighbors who have very small lots who have added structures. I actually lived downstream from one of them, and no dry well was happened. There's a lot of water that runs off now and runs down to, to the people that are down from them.
Well, can, can we maybe, uh. Think about, uh, new language for, to be able to include driveways and walkways, sometimes. Says something to the effect that the total, you know, impermeable space on a lot shall not never exceed fifty percent. Impermeable space or permeable spaces can include driveways, sidewalkways, and parking spaces.
Yeah.
What, what was that, Malcolm?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good compromise, um, so it's fifty percent, um. Has to be.
We gotta define what that means. It doesn't just mean gravel. I mean, you're gonna send me right that little technical rabbit hole. Because I was literally having this conversation today with the developer, and they don't want to do permeable pavement. Because they have to maintain it, and gravel doesn't count as permeable. It's just not, like, it's compacted just as hard as anything else, so. I mean, I think in principle it's a nice idea, and I wish that people would do more permeable surfaces, and I'd be happy to say. Unless all the hardscape surfaces are permeable.
So when you're driving a compactor over it every day. It's so hard to maintain that. So you're like.
If we.
Every day.
If we go back to my suggestion, what, what end up happening is likely we'll have more grassed areas. Right? Because if, if you're saying gravel doesn't count, then people can always park on the grass. We have more grassed area, and we have potential to have bigger buildings, which can serve. Uh, you know, more uses to the town, not just having it in anything else. If we leave it as is, then we're stuck, you know.
But they, but with what it is. But even grass, that's gonna go away as soon as you get.
But it's permeable.
Mud season, it's gonna become mud, then it's gonna be gone.
That just means it's permeable.
And then when it's muddy, then they decide they're gonna put gravel down, because I'm always parking in the grass anyway, and I've ratted it all up. I don't know, I think it's a slippery slope.
Yeah, as far as this, the, the size of the property goes, I mean, we're talking about more than three dwelling units here. So that's, that's gonna limit the number of properties that can qualify for a special permit for this anyway, isn't it?
So I'm in a housing development that dramatically changed the way that. The neighborhood's water ended up like water in their basements and things after they go on.
Negatively impacted.
Negatively impacted the surrounding.
I'd rather leave this one, and I'd rather leave it because I just don't see our rainfall patterns diminishing. We're not getting drier in the north. And I'd rather leave it because I just don't see our rainfall patterns diminishing. We're not getting drier in the northeast. We're getting wetter and we're getting rain through the winter and. I, I think it is, it is sort of trying to force green space that can be there for. Managing stormwater runoff. When the reality is, it'd be nice if everyone would be willing to have rain gardens and we could manage it correctly, but that's just, I don't think that's the reality of that then.
So good, go on to the next one then. Well, and so one last thing is that this, this is. More or less, it, I could be wrong, right? This, it's exclusive of structures. So I'm thinking, okay. If you're in R two or something like that and you got twenty percent of lot that you can cover. But that's more, and so, yeah, we're just limiting the amount that you can develop on, on the property.
Well, yeah, R two or multi unit is by special permit anyway, so. They could ask for, for waiver in this particular. Yeah, but you know, it's in the books, who's gonna ask for a waiver?
Well, somebody who's gonna build a new project.
You're probably S P G L. Uh, we can talk about it next year.
Yeah, next one, number two. One and, one and one half. Optic parking spaces shall, shall be provided for each dwelling unit, but we only require a long term A D U.
Um, well, so I, I think we had this conversation before and that the rationale was a. He who is probably likely given its small square footage to house fewer people and.
No, I, I understand that, but this, but this saying if you build a three family.
Yeah.
Which you, you could do by right.
Multi units, that's more than three, right?
In, in the, if, if everything passes, this is four and a half.
Yeah.
Okay. And there's no A D user.
Right, right.
Okay, all right, nevermind. Uh, coming down to eight point three point four.
Yeah.
Uh, you might wanna add B two to that list.
It is.
No, it's not, because downtown, but B two X H B C or M X D District, it doesn't say B two.
And general.
It's funny, it does in the title.
Oh, I'm just reading the title.
You have to read these, Malcolm.
I don't go beyond the title. No, just kidding.
We go to article six.
Yep.
Uh. And then the B two zone. Six and on. This is on page eight. Will allow multi unit dwellers to nine or more or mixed use development by right. Uh, and I would insert provided there.
Provided at least ten percent of the units.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then when you come down to the table of use regulations. I'm, I'm confused what you're showing there, because Y and S B.
That's a new footnote. Probably gonna be footnote four.
Whatever, then, so the little X indicates.
So there's a footnote that.
On page nine, right?
Yes, footnote X on the next page.
The footnote would apply to nine or more units. And mixed use.
So what you're saying is three to eight are by right and not anymore. Is a slow course special program, right?
Unless, and the foot, foot, the footnote gives a D on less, unless you make these.
Right, okay. Okay. Okay, so two different uses there, but that, that's why we have two different.
Uh, right, right, there's a faint line between. Between the three.
It's a very thin line, okay.
Yeah, oh.
It's four percent.
One, okay. Okay. Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, those are my other.
All right, thank you for that careful reading. Okay, so then, um, Chris is, is as you've provided this, your suggested warrant vertical. Layout and configurations.
Well. I think this is the suggested, this makes the most sense, um. Article one can stand alone. Article two can stand alone and should come before. Anything you can do later that begins to eliminate.
Right?
Yeah.
The only thing I think. You know, you, you could consider grouping, I think. Three and four as, as one. That one, I combined.
No, I don't like groupings.
Because you're worried that one thing will throw the other thing.
Yeah, okay. I think five is standalone, that's the root seven trees. Six is standalone, that's B two.
Okay.
Sounds good, let's do it at seven.
Then. Next one, you can decide there's. Making the motions or which ones.
And we want these to be like article one at the meeting, right?
Good luck with that.
Yeah, I don't think so. They're probably like schedule a special, like. Three days later, they'll have the zoning town meeting.
They'll move up all of the.
Chris, thank you so much and thank you, everyone on the board and especially Kim for taking excellent notes for us. It is a challenge. Through all of them. So good job. That page is done, we have to wrap things up, okay?
I'd like to thank the chair for her. Leadership.
Anyway, okay, so, um, anything else for us on that matter? Okay, great, so we will move on to subcommittee updates, board issues and concerns.
Uh, I don't have anything now that housing subcommittee hasn't met yet, uh, the, I haven't had any meetings since.
Great, uh, John.
Uh, now I have, uh, C D C is gonna be. Not sure we know. Always on the days when I say no. All right. Guess I'll be there. With a, uh.
Okay, Jonathan?
Uh, well, I have a question about, uh. North Palm Road.
Um, okay.
They have. Modified what they presented to us.
Oh, okay.
And they're going back. And it seems to me it's scheduled for public hearing on Monday.
Right.
But the bylaw says that they have to come to us for a preliminary review prior to that. Which they've not done.
Do we, um, do we know what the modification is?
Yes.
Is it a, a decrease in units or phasing approach to the units?
They, they went to, they came to us with twenty, then they went to thirty.
Right.
And our suggestion, they went to the select board with thirty. The select board seemed hesitant. Then the. Affordable Housing Trust. Voted to. Do twenty. We haven't seen that plan.
So we're back to twenty. Okay. Um.
We're not back to twenty, they're back.
They're back, well, I was. Um, okay, I don't know, Chris, I mean. I would think sometimes a decrease is considered less impactful and therefore would be maybe seen as covered under. Um, a previous review, whereas if it was more, maybe not, they would need to come back, but what?
It decreases more impactful on our housing situation.
Right, I know, I know. Do we, does anyone know, has, who's seen this? How'd you get this information?
Uh, Eileen. Senator.
The Housing Trust voted to endorse it. First Tuesday, Tuesday.
For, for the one.
Uh.
The, um.
Was the objective to potentially, I just got our hand raised there, so.
If I were, if I were asked for an opinion. Um, it's my opinion that the proposal has already been in front of this board. Twice.
But we did not make a recommendation on that one, that's my opinion, you're asking.
I'm, I'm asking for the opinion. I get where you're going and I, I agree with you. I'd love to see more, but I also would love to see housing. And I don't wanna get caught in a, in a battle with. Another. Board or procedurally and get hung up and not make the forward progress we need to be, make, right, so.
I don't, I, I don't think building twenty units on seven and a quarter acres is, can be called progress.
Zero houses versus twenty houses though is progress, right? Twenty houses versus zero houses.
But the whole reason we're back to twenty is because three or four people, not all of whom were even the butters. Spoke out, not one of them offered a single. Indication of how their property was going to be adversely impacted. And the select board didn't care.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's ridiculous.
Well, to be fair, the public hearing is not closed, the select board has not made a decision.
Uh, but I hear they're only taking, they're not doing any more oral comments, right?
Stand by what I just said.
Is it not relevant for us to wonder, did that, um, Habitat didn't? Consult the community when they went forward with the thirty unit proposal? And that seems to be that everybody was, the complaints are all about, we didn't know.
Right.
We thought it was twenty.
Right.
Then we said, then it came to us at thirty, but why, did anybody ever ask Habitat why they didn't do outreach like they normally do?
Or how they have done before.
Yeah, I, I made a few calls and. I think it was probably just an oversight, they just didn't, they thought, yeah, we're just plowing ahead, you know, and. Perception potentially of the butters or the community folks that they engaged with was that they were more like active partners. Than people that were providing input at a certain stage of the game, so. I, I don't know, I mean. I'd like to see thirty houses there, I'd like to see maybe forty houses there. I think the density of Rusatonic. Has plenty of precedent. Um.
The zoning allows it.
The zoning allows it, yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree with you a thousand percent, I just hesitant to like. Get too fussy about it and hold up any kind of forward progress.
What would be gained by having them, you know, talking to them again and saying thirty?
I don't know.
But then the candidate would not be happy with that, so we'd be back into, unless the point is to say the planning board. Feels strongly that we should have thirty, it's just another opportunity to say that.
So the.
But who would be able to then?
They're not willing to go back and like they, is it like a timeline thing? Like they don't wanna go back to the community and have those discussions again and try to.
I don't, I'm not gonna guess what all the parties, I, you know, I don't.
But was there any talk about like they, they, they have this timeline that they have now and they have like a lot of, like a lot of their potential applicants.
I have heard they have applicants and.
And so I'm wondering if, if it starts to affect like what they've already have.
But they, they can't do anything until they put the infrastructure in anyway, that's probably two years now or something.
I don't know about that, I mean, we have the grant, right, Chris?
I'm sorry.
The grant for the infrastructure extension to the site? We got.
We do have a grant.
And are we contracted with the state to move forward on that? And have we contracted for design services to, to design these?
What you have seen today is, is the design.
Yeah, so, so I, I, I think John, then, you know, if they get approval, I think they could break ground this year.
Well, they, they still, for this current regulations, they need a. Um. Uh. It needs to be presented as definitive plan to the planning board under the subdivision regulations. Um, so.
Prior to that, it has to be, the preliminary has to come to us.
It has come to them, so the, the definitive plan has to come. So that the board can review that. Grant any waivers that may be. Uh, requested if the waivers are, you know, um, appropriate and, um. And then from there, uh, the town will see, accept town acceptance of the road, so the planning board's endorsement of that. The plan will be required. And how much is the grant three point two? So that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per unit. Like in the infrastructure.
Mm hmm.
But the grant wasn't contingent upon a minimum number of units, was it?
Some of that is.
That isn't being reached by.
To the site though, not just out of the site.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think we have, I mean, we don't really have anything. Like, we don't have anything in this direction, right? Like. Like, no, it needs to be thirty, right? Like, all of ours is like in the opposite direction, now that's too many, and, right? Like.
I mean, I think Jonathan's point is well, well made, right? It's a big enough site to, to sustain more. There is enough infrastructure capacity to sustain.
And that's what we would like.
This is a political decision.
But yeah, I mean, like.
That's.
Well, I wouldn't characterize it as political decision, there may be practical considerations that the developer, that the town has chosen. May not want to build more than twenty, I, you know, there are a lot of factors that.
They were on board for thirty. They designed it for thirty because this board asked them to. Yeah, and they don't know what that means, they're on, they presented it. As their application, so I have to assume they were on board.
And, and the mandate of their organization is to house people, so you gotta assume at least that they wanna house more people.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we can all register our frustration with the process and I don't know how. Make it better, but, um. But I, I guess I, I'm not willing to like upend the whole process.
I don't know, it's ending, I think you're just extending it because they're not complying with the zones.
Well. There's no, to Jeremy's point, there's not like a mandate that they have to.
There is, it's in, it's in the third bylaw. They have to come to us before they file for a special permit, they have to come. With, with a preliminary plan.
Which they have twice, right?
But there's something in the new one.
presumably we've seen that one, that's the one we're talking about, or we've seen a twenty and we've seen a thirty.
But I think it's different.
So do we have two actors here? We have the Housing Trust and Habitat?
Yeah.
And are they working together on this?
Oh, yeah.
Clearly, so.
But it's the select boards. It's their. But permit.
And that's, I think that's the part that makes it a little bit weird, is that this board is the one that normally does planning and reviews. The configuration and use of land. Particularly with the focus on housing, but this special permit goes to the select board, which is why I said it's probably more political.
And in the, and in the public hearing, they never once said a single thing about the set plan. It was all about the neighbors.
But I just, I wonder, like, I don't know if we, we have, I don't know how much we have to stand on.
I don't think we have anything.
Direct, like when they're decreasing the impact of the project, I mean, what are we, what are we?
They're increasing the impact of the block.
What, you, you mean, you're increasing it because you're getting?
They, you, they just took our way housing for ten families.
Wow, I know, but I don't know if it's, I don't know.
I think the question here is procedural, whether or not they, since they're presenting a new plan, whether or not they have to come before this body and. To present the new plan, that's the question.
I think they do. Also, I don't think they're gonna have a forum on Monday.
Uh, I, um, Chris, I assume as far as. Staff advice on this matter, your opinion is. That they've presented to us already. Okay. Um, I mean.
I mean, we could, we could send a, we could send a letter to the select board. Right, I mean. Is there any comment from any other boards? If you comment.
None of the other boards have seen it.
Well, I know, but we, we can comment.
We can all send individual comments.
You don't wanna do one from them?
The select board is aware that you're thirty.
Well, they should be aware we reviewed the twenty unit plan too, but I don't know.
They're aware of all of us because they're aware of.
But we haven't seen this, but we have not seen this twenty in the plan.
It's not gonna be the original twenty minutes, okay?
No.
Yes.
Because it changed.
Could be.
Does Eileen have a comment on this matter?
Oh, I remember.
Hi, Eileen.
Hi, all. I sent.
Hey, it's working.
Yes, um. I sent you the story. Yes, um, I sent you the story.
I think, I saw that that just came through.
Yeah. That's what, that's what I was going to say.
That's all you want to say. So Eileen sent the notice, it said the select board is scheduled to continue the public hearing Monday night on the application for the special permit. About the planning and residential development off of Plain Road, and that the project is officially twenty units. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund voted for one tonight, which was three twenty, to decrease the number from thirty units. Um. Yeah, so it says here, Fred Clark says, uh, this is the project we wanted to build originally.
It is.
So I, I, I recognize it as a concern, and I, I share your opinion there, but I really would like to see something there, so. I don't know, I think we, we think it's a lost opportunity and hope there's space that they can add units in the future.
That would be nice. Did you see the plan?
I don't have the plan either.
Have you seen any of the plans? There's no space for future expansion.
I don't know if I told Baker that, but. Let's get, let's get twenty. I don't, Jonathan, I was like, first of all, you're about a practical, I'm disagreeing. Okay, um, anything for Pedro?
Yeah, I got three things, first, um, and then conversations with Tom Kusko at, uh, V R P C. About organizing some kind of communication to our state representative regarding the way that affordability is. Calculated, I guess. Uh, you know, he's, he's on board for doing something, he'd like to maybe have recommendations. Which we can all come up with, but I wanna invite you guys to, uh, submit recommendations. And he's asked that I reach that, reach out to some other organizations, like our local affordable housing activists in town. And I'm, I'm in the process of doing that, so that's kind of in process.
Any other towns besides Great Barrington, or is this just a Great Barrington argument?
Um, no, it's, it's, uh, I'm. I'm, I'm just trying, I don't wanna turn it into a gigantic thing, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, right now, just get, uh, the people on board. Who are the most active in, in the housing advocacy in the county.
But Pedro, when you brought this up at one of the meetings, I mean, there was a lot of head nodding, and we had a problem too.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
So, yeah. I'm, I, I'm gonna start, start with contacting the people at C E C and in construct. And, uh, and Eileen at Berkshire Housing, those are like the big players, and. And then I might send out something to the rest of the, the commission, just to see if they wanna add their names or whatever. We'll see, it's kind of developing, if you guys are interested in talking to me about it, you know, please contact me. Um, at the last meeting too, we, um, a couple of things came up, and Chris, I don't, I did bring my note, the right notebook that has all my notes in it. But Chris, maybe you can help me with this, there's two items I wanted to relay, the first is that, uh, the governor has approved a position of rural.
What was that, rural coordinator or something?
This came out of the, uh, a couple of years ago, there was this sort of. Effort to, to bring rural to Boston, and in that effort. And one of the first things that has happened because of it is that they established this position, I can.
To do, is it a new department?
Well, she named the new person, and I can't, again, if I had my freaking notebook, the right notebook, I mean, I would have the title. The position is like a rural.
Yeah.
Person, so there's a person now at Austin.
Like a rural unbundled or something.
Yeah, well, it's a person, you know, who's, who is strictly, uh, working on rural issues. So I thought that was a good thing, it could be a really positive thing, we've not had that before. Uh, and then the other thing is kind of sad thing, and that is that, uh, he, the way. Okay, this has to do with the census, and has to do with the way that the census now identifies urban versus rural communities. So before, in, in the previous census, uh, there were two designations. One was for urban and rural areas, or really for urban areas, one was an urban area, and then another one was called an urban cluster. So if you could imagine that Great Barrington was an urban cluster before, uh, towns like Lee and, and Lennox. Created their own sort of urban cluster to create an urban area, Pittsfield, uh, had an urban area that Adams was part of it. And in the past, and then North Adams is another area, so the census decided to get rid of, oh, the way that those were defined. And I wish I had my notebook, because I have all those numbers in there, and Chris, maybe you can. It's, it was, the, the cluster was five thousand to fifty thousand or something. I wish, five thousand and ten thousand, I can't remember, I'm sorry, I can't remember, but the point is that the, the new census gets rid of the cluster. So now, uh, an urban area is, and so now they're only urban areas, and an urban area is defined as a location of ten thousand people or more. And.
Within a certain.
Geographic area, yeah.
Yeah, being too spread out.
Yeah, okay, and so what that does for us is that it, it takes us out of opportunities, and Chris can talk more about this. Opportunities for funding of certain things like highways and maybe some infrastructure projects and, and that sort of. So we're no longer considered an urban area, we are officially rural.
Pedro, it's the director of rural affairs.
Yeah, that's.
Can we send that to the director of rural affairs?
So, uh, Mark Malloy at V R P C specifically mentioned that one of the things that this town in particular would lose. Is potential tips, um, to do with highway instruction and that sort of thing, so.
Can we have a highway back?
Bit of bad news. That's it.
Thank you for that uplifting summary, how challenging it is to live in a rural area, Jack, did you have anything?
I never thought we were a city.
Yeah.
We technically were, and you know, and HUD defines urban areas differently than the census. HUD defines urban areas with the opportunities that are available to people, and I think you have to start with five thousand people, and then. If you have cultural opportunities, food opportunities, uh, commercial opportunities, and healthcare opportunities, then you can potentially be.
And this is a natural, a national definition, not just a regional state.
But the other one is too.
So we were.
The census driven one is also federal, yeah.
Yeah, what's the? They, they didn't have any comment why that, that changes.
You know, heaven only knows, right, because it's the federal policies, I'm sure there was some sort of lobbying at play, um, did you have any information to continue?
Not now.
I don't have any either. Uh.
No.
I, I asked Malcolm and started, yeah, I'm starting, okay.
It was a long time ago.
It was, I know.
Good stuff, though.
Nothing for town planner's report, um, our next meeting is in April, at some point. So do we all have town meeting in our calendars for May? Our next meeting is April thirteenth. And. And the twenty seventh, and then town meeting, is town meeting first of May?
That's right.
It's May first, really? Is it gonna stay May first?
That's early.
We're all gonna be screaming, May day, may day.
It's gonna be dark and cold, is it outside?
It isn't.
Inside, wow.
That's gonna be big.
It won't be dark and cold.
I can't bring my sex, though.
It may be wet.
And you just have to be more stealth about it.
Put May one on your calendar, you can either.
Malcolm.
Malcolm, what's up?
Um, uh, does the Zoom authorization run out at the end of this month?
Uh, yes.
End of March?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So unless the legislature passes something, this is our last Zoom meeting.
No, the board can still meet, uh, by Zoom, uh, the remote law still is in, you know, back before the days of COVID. Uh, a member could participate remotely. As long as there was a forum in the room.
Right.
Okay, but the, okay, so the remote.
Okay.
So you still gotta have a forum, okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Does this mean that the public can't sit down, sit in on Zooms?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Why would we not do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it makes. So we've got two people remaining on the line, um, is there any public comment? I mean, or Jane? Okay, um, hearing no comment, we'll adjourn at seven forty two.